Wrap it up this way, thank you. So I don't mean to be negative about this. I'm pointing out facts that I have seen, facts that I've heard, facts that I've interviewed, county and state employees in fact over these issues. So I hope I'm getting this across to you in a positive fashion, and I don't mean to demean anybody for anything, so thanks so much.
Thank you. Chairman, we did have one late sign out for a comment, and that was Jane Grethie from Lakeland Circle.
Thank you. Thank you, I'm Jane Grethie, I live on Lakeland Circle in Silver Lakes, and I will take issue with a couple of comments that were made. We live on the north pond in Silver Lakes, we love the view, we pay more than people that are not on the lake, and we don't have littorals, and as Jim mentioned, our lakes are some of the cleanest in all of Gateway, and I don't want to look out my back and see littorals. And, excuse me sir, Avery, but that's my property, I paid for that. My neighbor didn't pay for that, the people across the pond didn't pay for that, it's mine and my husband's, that's who paid for that, and we don't want to see littorals. So the DO should stand for each lake, each subdivision. Thank you.
Yeah, that's right, that's what I'm talking about. DO needs to stand.
Any more comments? That's all we have on the public hearing side.
Mrs. Squire? Yeah, that's where you get to come.
Nice presentation.
I also was on the committee, but I also see the benefits of the littorals as I've walked around in other communities, not just in Gateway, where the littorals are there, okay, but are maintained, and it is Florida, and the littorals are part of Florida. When you go up north, there aren't littorals because they're different kinds of water. So in some places you do need littorals, because they are, they do prevent erosion, and they do help keep the quality of the water cool, that's all.
Mr. Banks?
Thank you. It seemed like ever since I stepped on the board, this issue has come up one time or another, and there's been discussions, and for me, I think it's, really comes down to residents' position or their perspective, and it seems to be split in a lot of cases, for and against, so it's really hard to set certain policies when you have such a divide in a topic like this, and it is one of those topics that do tend to divide, but what I keep going back to, and it kind of relates to kind of my day-to-day life in the business that I'm in, is what's the problem we're trying to solve? I mean, at its core, that's what we need to understand, what problem are we trying to solve, or what problem are we trying to prevent? And I'm not an expert in this area by any means, but I think, I mean Flavia, in her presentation, she said what's the purpose of the ponds, but I think when you look at our policies and procedures, we need to ask that question, what is the true purpose of that document or that procedure? I don't think water quality has been an issue, at least in the majority of our ponds, so anyone can correct me if I'm wrong, but that doesn't seem to be a primary driver, except maybe in eighty-three and a couple other isolated lakes where that is an issue. There has been erosion issues, and we're spending millions of dollars to fix some of the existing ponds, and there's more to come to keep those properly maintained. So my position on this, and I've looked at the existing kind of standards, and the couple areas that I keep going back to is, you know, what is the, what's the standards in place? Where there's areas where the DO is silent and there aren't any littorals, I mean, my personal position is, if there's not water quality issues, if there's not erosion, then I don't see why we would spend additional money to put something in place if there's not an existing problem. In areas where there is, you know, like Hampton Park's a great example, where there's a lot of, where the littorals have expanded, what I look is, when I look at the, both Lee County and other standards, it tends to split in minimums, minimum requirements, I don't think I've ever seen a maximal requirement, and I think that's where the problem lies in a lot of areas, is we can set a standard in the minimum, and I think ours is twenty-five percent, I've seen it even as high as thirty-five, but I don't see anywhere, and even we had the expert in from Lee County, I specifically asked her if there was a maximal, or was there a specific, specific time where there was a diminishing return from littorals, and she kind of danced around a little bit, I think maybe she might have said yes at some point, maybe there might be, but I don't remember her saying, and you correct me, I don't think she ever said there was a certain percentage where there, where there had to be a, where there's a maximal. So, I mean, this is a tough issue, I'm a little bit in the middle, I think the current document speaks to some things that we probably shouldn't be adhering to, but I do think there's some opportunities for revision, and I know that Ed and some of the others who were on the ponds committee worked hard, and it was a, I would consider an unbiased group, that's the direction that I would prefer us just move into when we make decisions as pool committees, and with such a matter of experts, people that either are passionate or have knowledge about the issue thoroughly vetted out. And to be quite honest, I look to Pelican a lot of times in some of these areas, because they have, you know, extensive committees, they spend a large amount of time vetting things out, they pilot, and then what works, they continue to move forward on, what doesn't work, they abandon quickly. So for me, any standard that I look at, I tend to kind of look over the fence to Pelican and see what they've done in the past, because I personally just think they've done a great job in a lot of their areas, one, they've got the manpower and the expertise, and I'd say when they do something, they look at quality, cost, and impact of the residents in those three areas, and I think that's a good decision. So there's nothing I can say right now that says I'm pointing one way or the other, I think it's a difficult thing, I think if it's not broke, don't fix it, plan for, to prevent any problems in the future, but I think before we move forward, I think we need to have a little bit broader audience weigh in before we adopt any new standards. So that's all I'm saying, thank you for your time.
Good.
They stole my thunder. I learned in the industry a long time ago, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. We've had these things, we spent eighteen months on that littoral standard, we had everybody on it, we talked to the county, we talked to engineers, and I have to do say so myself, I think it's a pretty dag-on-good document. Did it have a weakness? Yes, it had one weakness, and we dropped the ball on addressing how to implement the DO when it's silent. And I would go along with the Jim, as you did on the committee four years ago, you did a wonderful job, I want to look at this and read it, because I think this is exactly all we really need to do at this time. Avery, I don't want to pick on you, because you're a layman, but an educated layman, but if you, if you buy half of what those people dish out down at the county, you're swallowing some bad stuff. Ellen and I have been to a minimum of three workshops in Lee County, where the county has come, those same people, and they have been quizzed over and over and over again. If twenty-five is good, why not thirty-five? Why not forty? They have no data whatsoever to show there is any reason to go beyond twenty-five percent. That's why they used the word, they don't have the word minimum in there at all, it says must, must be designed at twenty-five percent, but they go one step further. Twenty-five percent is nothing more than a design factor, so if you have a lake that has two thousand lineal feet, twenty-five percent, you have five hundred plants. They don't tell you to put those five hundred plants around the pond, and first of all, they don't tell you anything, they give you guidelines. You have to retain an architect, landscape architect, to do the plants, just like the plans that were done at Hampton Park. I don't know what they paid, but I'm going to say twenty-five, thirty thousand bucks. Probably one of the most elaborate set of pond standards or pond designs that I've seen, they were dang-on-good, just so helping that Lennar couldn't read the King's English about how to build it right. But the issue is, and this is the point I want to make, they defined on those plans a PLS, that is a Planted Littoral Shelf. Now, if they were wanting to take and anticipate the growth of these, because we all know they grow like wildfire, then they would have taken and put around the circumference of the pond, PLS. They didn't do that. They designated PLSs on the pond, inferring that they don't anticipate the need for this to go along, and they want it maintained, that's what I believe.
And they also didn't ask you that too, I didn't see anywhere where there's any language that calls out, so if the minimum standard is twenty-five percent or thirty-five percent, I haven't seen any language that speaks to maintaining that at any certain percentage, other than what you're calling out as the littoral plant.
Well, no, what, what, what do they take care of that, in my opinion, and I'm going to get back to what Jim or Flav, I think Flavia, I want to give her credit. If they were anticipating that, one, why don't they sell what they're trying to shove out at us at these conferences? I mean, you haven't got residents there, they don't have to worry about it, nobody's going to hang them at those meetings, it's basically all fish shells. So it'd be a safe time to say, hey, we put down twenty-five, but we really want a hundred. They can't support it, and furthermore, if they did support it, why did you approve a set, you guys, these developers and their engineers, they have to jump through the hoops to get their approval. If they would have gone in there and they had twenty-five percent, why'd they approve it if they wanted thirty, or forty, or fifty? But better yet, if they wanted and anticipated the complete circumference to be littorals, why didn't they say, go back, I want you to plant twenty-five now in selected places, but I want you to take and put PLS around the whole lake? They didn't do that, because they have no basis for it. My deal is, is that somebody brought up, I don't remember which one, may have been either my wife, aeration. We've got ponds, Rock talked about, seventy-six ponds in Gateway, thirty-four of them are silent. Those thirty-four are not only silent on littorals, they're silent on aeration, but the problem is, we've got ponds that are, the other ones that make that, but it was forty-two, that have littorals and aeration. Where's our aeration? To me, as a civil engineer, that aeration is far more important than those littorals. The other one, we got thirty-five thousand lineal feet of golf course shoreline in Gateway Greens, and the predominance of Gateway Greens, like Silver Lakes, like Devonshire, like Pine Wood Lakes, are the older communities, they do not have DOs with littoral standards in them. The golf course, I was on that board over there, I was the president of that club, we begged, we begged the CDD, put the littorals on the golf course side, you get the best of both worlds, you comply with the county's intent of avoiding residential backyards and commercial. The word aesthetics, in this proposed deal, we struck the word aesthetics. Aesthetics means a lot to a lot of people, so the issue is, is that you don't go in, and as Jim said, start changing and butchering, but my thing is, is right now, I like the idea of what Flavia said, and I think where you were leading Doug, I think if anything, I have no problem of calling back, creating the committee again to talk, but I want a committee this time of more the two people writing this down. I want a cross-section of this community. I like the idea that we first, and in the interim, let's get this issue resolved, because we have one outstanding issue that is unanswered, what do we do, or we have no requirements for littorals, no PLS, and the property owner has asked for them to be removed. I think that the property owners should be able to come before this board, sell their case, and as Jim said, he had a plan for how to do that. The only thing I might tweak it would be that the CDD would be a middle man on making sure that we get a licensed contractor to go in and remove those. But those are my points on this, is there is a lot of just bull being dished out by the county, and if the county was so firm in what they will verbally tell you, why don't they change ten-four-eighteen?
I have a question. And out of the, I think, Rod, correct me if I'm wrong, was it thirty-four, how many current lakes that were the DO is silent?
Seventy-six total, and there's thirty, forty-two that have DOs with littorals and thirty-four.
Okay, so out of that thirty-four, I'd like to know how many have littorals, and how many do not? Do you have an idea?
We can check.
Because again, that's, I think part of that conversation is that the DO is silent, it doesn't restrict, nor does it.
Of the ones in Gateway Greens, I can say from the ones in Gateway Greens, well, first of all, the reason it's silent is because the DO for the, those thirty-four ponds do not have a PLS, there's no PLS, so where are you going to put the littoral? The issue is, though, that we've gotten wildcat growth, spike rushes everywhere in this place. I mean, there's no place you can't go if you don't have spike rushes. The issue is, is it maintained? Not at all. But we need to have somebody come in, look at this stuff, but what frustrates me more than anything, we brought this standard up in 2015, before I got on this board, I begged, get somebody in here that knows what they're doing on this, and get a contractor, give him a specification, give him a specification, you're to cut these things, you're to trim them, you're to keep it at to an eight-foot level, twelve-foot level, I don't care, come up with the specifications. Our contract with Aquagenics, where we have ponds that have littorals, a five-year-old could write a better word order than what we got. We don't say how, we don't say when, we don't say how high, nothing, it's silent. I think that once we get a contractor or two in here, show him what the specification is, I think there might be some heads turned when your bills, your assessments, go through the roof as to what it's going to cost to do what some would done, and I'm not, I don't want to be a party to that. The big issue is, we've had this thing for four years, we've been operating it, and we haven't had, as Jim indicated, a water quality issue yet. If it ain't broke, don't fix it.
And I'll finish up with my comments, and Flavia, thank you, because I agree with you, I think that, I don't necessarily think that the old ponds group needs to be reconstituted, I think we need to create a new group to look at this with fresh eyes, and I don't think that staff or a board member should be on it, I think it should be strictly residents, and I'm just going to ask you, would you be willing to chair that committee and come up with a group of people that would look at this from a fair perspective? Because I have to say, even I looked at what other CDDs have as far as their pond standards, they say in six to seven, eight pages, what it's taking us twenty-six pages to say. This is such a complicated document, it just needs to be redone, start all over, look at what other CDDs have, and get a document that we can work with.
And I, I mean, personally, I think having some of the pre-existing members of that pond committee would be of real value, because they have some historical knowledge there, but I do think we need to infuse with new participants, and we need to try to represent as many communities that have ponds as possible. I would definitely get someone from Pelican on that ponds committee.
Absolutely.
You want to talk about a co-chair, I would have someone from Pelican co-chairing.
Well, I've got a problem with that, Doug, and I'm glad you brought it up, I wasn't going to bring it up, I wasn't going to bring it up, but since you brought it up, I'm going to bring it up.
I don't know what brought up.
I thought this was the Gateway Services CDD. Why do we have two separate sets of standards? We are one CDD.
I agree with it.
Why does Pelican have a set, and we have a set? Though we're all one. Has anybody here seen the Pelican's pond standards? You have?
No.
You've seen them? Were they on disappearing ink paper? I haven't seen them. Never seen them?
Can you get him a copy?
I think you will find that Bob Gephardt said, we don't have any standards.
There's no written.
There's no written. There are no written standards.
There are no written standards.
That community, that community has one thing.
I thought you had them.
That community has one thing and one thing going for them, they got Bob Gephardt. He handles all of this stuff. He negotiates with the contractors, he tells them what he wants. We don't have that person here. We should have that person here, as our staff person.
I thought.
But our staff person isn't doing what needs to be done.
I thought Jan had created pond standards over there, because I know she worked really hard on that before she moved out of the community.
Well, my point is, well, we can bring Bob in, I would love to have Bob be on the committee, I believe Bob was a, do you remember Rod, when Bob, a, what's the word they use on Fox, a contributor? A contributor to the standards?
Yeah, he was one of the others, yeah, he was right with us, right to the bitter end.
I think that we, I'll go along with that, but I certainly would want to take, like it has been on every other committee, I want to see who's on that standard, because I've seen what happens in Washington on stacked committees. I want to see that this committee is representative, and then I want to make sure of who they're going to be working with. Certainly deal with the counties, I want to have some engineers involved, I want some biologists involved, I want other people involved, I'd like to see them go out and talk, I'd like to have them go over to Arborwood, I want to go over and see Arborwood's CDD's pond standards. It's got to be probably one sentence long, we ain't got none. You look over there, they got thirty-eight ponds, and they're in a frigging littoral on one pond. How can this happen? Why can't this happen?
I mean, and I think you could probably.
It just doesn't make sense, it tells me that it is not quite as valuable as it's made out to be.
I mean, I think even right here in this audience, we've got Hampton Park, we've got Silver Lakes.
I think we've got some good.
We've got Stony Brook, we've got Pelican, I mean, you've got a large portion of your committee, just, you know, at least examples of those sitting right here.
I don't have any problems with that.
Do you want my answer?
Yes.
Yes. I was going to get back to that.
And talking about Arborwood, I actually just reached out to Kathy, and I scheduled something with her, so we can go over what they have over there, that CDD as well. But yeah, that's.
But the issue is, as the attorney said, they're in the city, we're spelling reserve. They're in the city, same deal, and basically the same new standards, and yet, one is completely silent.
Pelican is not all in the city, Ed.
Uh, I'm sorry?
Pelican is not all in the city.
The older part, it's the newer part.
Most, most of Pelican is in the city.
I don't know any part of Pelican, it's not in the city, except for, no, it's totally in the city.
Light Down Gateway Boulevard.
The new section, yeah, the new section is not in the city.
Light Down Gateway Boulevard.
It's in the city, it's in our service area, it's in the city.
It's in the city.
That went in, now in.
But we don't get our, we don't get our water from the city, from those areas.
Pelican is one-hundred percent in the city as far as those four lakes. It is, it is, Jim, it is. That, that's Preido, Preido is in the city. Preido and Passo are in the city.
No, they're in the city, but we have the water and sewer service area.
I knew we had that.
They are, yeah.
But they are in the city.
I believe they're in the city. Like Arborwood is in the city.
My point was whether, whether Preido is or isn't, I know it is, but whether it is or isn't, is beside the point. The fact is, Pelican has requirements for littorals, they're in the city, and Arborwood is in the city, and has not, thank you.
Chairman, the board was inclined to establish a committee, whatever it's against in the past, is to come back to the next board meeting with a resolution to outline the role and functions of that committee, and recognize that there's something to the Sunshine Law, something to be aware of that, so if the board wants to delegate to the chair or the manager, it gives my opinion as to what should be in that resolution, we can bring it back to the next board meeting.
And I'm going to, once again, I'll reach out to Flavia, because I don't think, I don't think really, for this particular thing that we're trying to set up, that staff or board member should be involved in it, I'd rather have it be all done by a resident. So if you can get your ideas down and get them to Chris for a resolution of what the committee should be, I think that would be great.
I think we need to provide that outline, don't we? Don't we provide the outline of what the purpose of the committee?
Ultimately, we have to vote on it, but I'd like to hear from the residents.
I have the scope from the original, so we can offer.
My.
The original, but the original committee, I had the scope.
What might be part of it is that since the time has passed, it might be all being determined, just a concern, it might be a starting point, and get the Flavia, Chris, myself, and the chairman, and propose a resolution.
So I think we, as the governing body and the authors of the committee, we set the parameters, give it to the committee, and the committee comes back and proposes recommendations to alter that outline based on their.
But I think initially, you need to have a initial resolution outlining what the roles and functions are, and it might be bare bones first, starting with what we got, and then they may want to come and expand or contract it.
Can you, Patty, will you send that to Flavia?
Yeah.
And my only question I have is, because looking at the standards from original and all the drafts, it's a water surface system, and that does not address all, so if I'm going to be looking at a pond standard, that's what I'm going to be looking at, stormwater system, not the entire surface, which, you know, includes everything else, it's two different things.
Well, just keep in mind, keep in mind, the pond standards we did, and one of the reasons it's long, we tried to keep this thing down, but we went into things that were beyond.
Correct.
The littorals, we got into aeration, and we got into a whole bunch of things, that's why that deal got so lengthy. I think when Margaret redrafted it and added the two exhibits, we didn't have that at the time, but I think it is mandated that those development orders for each of those seventy-six ponds be in those standards as an exhibit. This deal of what does it say, what it doesn't say, is real easy if you've got the development order, you look at it, you read it, we didn't have that. The only one that even introduced that, I think, was one time as Jim, Jim Wiznuski was going to show me where I could stick it if I was going to do it the wrong way, they had knowledge of it, they worked on it, but a lot of, a lot of communities don't know what that is, and they need to know it, but I think we need a long discussion of aeration by that committee.
I agree with that.
The bathymetrics, we've got the money and the budget to do the bathymetrics now, we know which ponds need it, the only thing we've got to work out is how it's going to be done, and how we're going to, how we're going to get our good friends at FPL to provide the power.
I have a ten-second question, real quick. Hampton Park's DOs, I don't believe are silent, is there going to be some sort of moving forward with a cleanup or a maintenance plan to these lakes anytime soon? Is it going to be, we're going to start trimming and edging and doing something?
Maintenance started in your lakes, didn't it?
The what?
Maintenance started in your lakes?
They sprayed a perimeter of about three feet, and then that's where it stopped.
In the pond or in the?
On the outer, is it in the inner part of the lake, right?
At the eight feet or ten feet mark.
Right, it's my understanding per a letter from Ellie, that they were supposed to be sprayed, and once they were sprayed, they were supposed to be removed, and they were never removed, they just got sprayed and then just allowed to die.
That was a little impartial to us.
I'd like CL be charged to immediately take the thirty, no, the forty-two DOs that have the littorals, which would be the fourteen at Hampton Park and the others, take those to Aquagenics, and let's get a contract amendment to start doing the work that we need to have done.
Well, and I think part of that too is.
Because if you call George, he'll tell you, I don't know what you want.
This is, this picture's a great example of control elevation interior, there's, there's an issue with excessive growth, you know, beyond what we would consider in our standards.
Yeah, it's nowhere near eight feet.
Okay, so it's nowhere near eight feet, but I think another larger problem is from control of elevation of the shelf, I mean, that's just, I mean, you clean all that up, that change is probably a large, a large perception.
It could change the whole outlook of the whole community and what we're sitting here for.
There's two parts to that, it's control elevation down and control elevation up.
Yeah.
And on season. In the dry season, it looks like the dunes, in the wet season, you can't see it.
Can't see it, and why not in the winter?
In between, yeah, and with what you're suggesting it, there's a cost to it, it's not, I mean.
You want to kidnery, there's a cost.
To just task Aquagenics with doing that, we need it.
I have talked to Aquagenics numerous times, in fact, I called in as late as about one-thirty today, I wouldn't hear one thing from him, has anybody from our staff approached you on changing the maintenance and following the development orders at Gateways Littorals? Nobody. And that's, I think that's a staff issue, Chris, that we have a person we're paying that's supposed to be doing this, I think that person needs to do that, and the other one is, is that to help do it, again, going over to Pelican, it's what you said, Doug, Bob, I mean, he does, he's.
And he knows how to do it on a dime.
He knows how to do it right, and I mean, he can pinch a dime and make it a quarter. The issue is, we need somebody, staff needs some help in writing the contract, a specification such that Aquagenics, or for that matter, any other contractor, can give us a bit. I hate doing change orders. Change orders. Change orders, the winner of a change order is the guy that's got the pin. And I'd much rather, not that I don't trust Aquagenics, I'd just like to take that change order, since we're having to do that right now in the way of a change order, take it to maybe another vendor and say, this is what we're doing, what's your estimated price per foot? I have been told a dollar a foot. That's a lot of money, people. That's a lot of money.
And I will, I'll say in Elle's defense, she just finally, because Chris showed it to me, got all of the development orders, all in one binder.
Margaret, she's been here for fifteen frickin' years. Why have we had to wait so long to get the development orders?
I don't think anybody's ever asked to have them compiled.
But then you got the wrong person then in the management. You know that was Severn Trent. We now have a manager that's now doing the job. Severn Trent, they didn't do nothing. When I raise up the question, what, let's see, what was that, that big guy that was Severn Trent, his deal was, go back to Indiana.
Well, and we can't do anything, we can't change anything that happened in the past.
But we can correct it now.
Chris has got the, the district moving in the right direction. We've got somebody that's willing to head up a committee. We'll, we'll, with Chris's help, we can create some parameters that can come before the board, and.
I think he's gotta know, in his fight, he should have staff thinking ahead of what needs to be done and get it done. We've got to know what this stuff is going to cost us before we get too far down.
Well, and the last thing I'll say is, we spent a million dollars on Lake Bank restoration. I think it's perfectly acceptable for us to spend money on lake maintenance.
Yes, yes. And I feel, and I'll say that, I wanna say this in an open forum, for the people that don't want laterals behind their houses that have had the rock put down, I don't think anybody intended that we were gonna go in and plant laterals down below where the rocks are.
Hold on, Margaret.
I don't, I don't believe that that's.
We talked about that, we had two ponds that a year and a half ago, we said, we're going in and putting stone in Cypress K, and I said, you got lateral requirements on those ponds, what are you gonna do? Go in there and cut that perfectly brewed green material after we have it to comply? We talked about it, what we did is what we do very well here, we kicked the can down the river.
And we will be planting in Cypress K very soon, but we'll be planting around the structures.
Which is what, where they should go.
Exactly.
So there's our solution.
And Doug, I would say, the thing you gotta watch is, Pelican hasn't done this for no money.
Oh, no. No, I didn't say you, I didn't say it's any money.
There's a lot of money spent.
Well, just look at your budget.
Yeah.
You've got a third, that may be forty percent of the ponds we've got, and your budget's twice as what our budget is right now.
And, but I will say, and I think everybody agreed we weren't gonna cut the material and plant laterals. I don't think, I heard anybody say, oh, no, we haven't.
Well, the, the problem we've got now is the fact that we have, that pond is twenty-nine hundred lineal feet, and we have twenty-nine hundred feet of armamax around it. So wherever we go to put in laterals, we're gonna cut the, the product. Unless, unless you're gonna plant it on the top of the deal. And my thing is, is that if I'm gonna spend the money to do that, I look, much look closer at putting in what needs to be in Cypress K.
But if there's not an issue?
Aeration.
There's not an issue?
Why are we doing it?
Put it in an aerator and be done with it.
That's my point.
I thought they had a phone.
And you mentioned that it's going to cost money for maintenance, and my statement to that is, had maintenance been done as it should have been done all along, then you wouldn't have had to put in extra money now to do the maintenance.
And I agree with you, I agree with you.
That's, that's a little bit overwhelming.
Yes, yes, please.
Well, I don't live in a, I'm not Hampton Park, but I'm just saying, any, any pond.
Before you leave, would you fill out one of the forms in the back?
Randy Turk, I live in Stony Brook, upon a lake, nine-eight-five-nine, Weatherstone Place. I hope during this long and involved discussion that we don't lose track of the fact that we have to maintain what we have now. And that's the most important priority that you should have. Just throwing in aerators without maintaining what we have now is a waste of time anyway. That's why I'm gonna start.
Thank you, Doug. And I think we were going to finish with supervisor comments. So, Mr. Kinkel, supervisor.
What?
Mr. Banks.
Just a couple things, I, I think we already kind of spoke to the, the improvements around the flowways. That's a really great job there, looks, looks great. We had any updates on the fire station, on when they planned?
Their, their, the fire captain also attended that meeting on the roundabouts, and I speak with him on a very regular basis, and they're actually looking about maybe buying a little more property over there so they can get that turned out on that roundabout. They also said they might like to buy a nice open track up by the pool if they wanna switch or something.
He, he said they were in, they were doing desire.
Right.
And just for awareness, I think this past week, the principal for the new high school was announced. She was the former Lee High Middle. So what's gonna happen from there, things will start to accelerate. They'll come up with a name, colors, mascot, the curriculum, all that kinda stuff. So there should be some really exciting things coming out in the near future. I don't really, I'm not familiar, I can't remember the name off the top of my head, but I don't know much about it, but I thought it's, it's interesting progression. The last thing I'll say is, and I don't wanna spend any time on, but again, I just wanna throw it out there. You know, we keep talking about towing policies and having sheriff duty and speeding, and there's still every, some reoccurring theft that happens in the different communities. I would really like for us to, to look at whether it's feasible or viable, or if it even makes any sense, but looking at some type of security or some type of, I don't wanna necessarily call it a, a police presence, but something that is managed, that falls under the, the GSD. I think if we had, whether it's, you know, one, one officer on duty with a vehicle riding around twenty-four-seven, it, it may be more cost-effective and more viable than either hiring sheriff or doing something like that. Again, I don't know if it's viable at all, I just think we, we need to kick that around a little bit and see if it's something that would be beneficial. And I would say the scope of that, you know, gateway security officer would be all of gateway, including when you've got a gate, not a gate, able to service the entire community. So maybe, Chris, it might be something you, you know, if you can prioritize it, if the chairman agrees to, to look at it.
Sure. Our late-night detail has been running speed on Gateway Boulevard, and they have been out there on and off because of the number of complaints they've gotten on speeding. And it's unfortunate that it's a through fare now, if you go to Griffin, you know, look in the morning, all that traffic coming out is just going straight ahead and they aren't coming in here.
And I just believe a presence in itself, regardless of how much actual power that, that presence has, does carry a lot of weight and can be a deterrent in some areas.
So.
I'll finish by saying, if anybody's curious what they're putting in down there where they cleared the land on State Road eighty-two, it is a storage facility. I don't know how many units it's going to be, but it is a storage facility.
And we also have what would be built in twenty-twelve, appears to be down here at Daniel's, that construction right there. Same name, same everything, same number of units, four stories high. I hope that they moved it from Gateway down there, but we don't have that reference.
I just didn't get a clear answer on that active DL Hampton Park. Are we gonna see some forward movement with the maintenance kind of getting like a forward movement? Or I'm gonna be like, wow, I mean, is there, I mean, is there gonna be like a forward jump or?
I think that they, they, my understanding of what they were gonna do is they were gonna do three feet, and then it was gonna be cleared out, and then they would do additional.
Okay, in areas that needed it.
I think you just need to be patient, and you'll see it, you'll see it happen.
That means don't go spraying Roundup.
No, 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 I, I wanna get cancer, so I'm, you know, appreciate it.
With that in mind, I'm going to call this meeting adjourned.